Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Bibb County Board of Commissions regular scheduled meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 2nd, 2021, and the time is now six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone here today and officially call this meeting to order. Commissioners, I do have one item to add to the agenda. I'm going to ask for a motion in just a moment to amend the agenda. I want to add, according to item number eight, old business. This particular item was added as a previous denial of an alcohol license. We discussed that before, but it was not added to the agenda. At appropriate time, I'll ask the attorneys to come up and read that. But this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda by adding that item number eight. That's my motion. Can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Howell. Any discussion on that matter? Eight old business? And the item is a denial of new alcohol beverage license for SR groceries located at 3173 Houston Avenue. Commissioner Watkins, this is one you had a question about the previous time. So that is a denial. We're adding that to the meeting tonight to take a vote on. If we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on that matter? All those in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and it will be added to the consent agenda as old business number eight. At this time, we've officially called this meeting to order, and we'll begin with our prayer tonight. If you stand, please, if you may, and ask Commissioner Valerie Nguyen to lead us in a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Paul Bronson.
This prayer comes to us tonight from Reverend Teresa Edwards of the Forest Hills United Methodist Church on Forest Hill Road. Let us pray, please. God of all community and of our community, on this night of important work on behalf of our city, how appropriate it is that we pause and turn to you. You made us all beautifully created in your image. Now you call us to come together as individuals that in our common work, we might find unity and improve this place we call home. Give us discernment to see the needs around us and resources to meet them. Sharpen our vision so we might be aware of the ones who so often go unnoticed and underserved. Many, may our hands reach out in love, our words build bridges of care, our generosity feed hungry people and hungry hearts, and our vision be one of hope that we might become a community that shines with unity. Tonight, good work awaits us. May the Spirit bind us together with one purpose and deep commitment to move forward our goals with joy and vigor and hope. We yield ourselves to you, oh God. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Bronson?
In turn, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen and Bronson. This time, I'm sorry, we'll move on to our proclamation presentations. We have several very important proclamations tonight, and we'll begin with the first one. I'll ask Pastor Dr. Henry Ficklin to come forward, make a presentation in regard to the mentor program proclamations. And Dr. Ficklin will be making a presentation tonight in celebration of Mentoring Month, which is actually in January. We didn't have a meeting scheduled for that time, but this is the National Mentoring Month, and he'll actually be recognizing Girls Dig Deeper first, Nakibie Timite. Dr. Ficklin?
Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Macon, Georgia, Macon, Bibb County, Georgia. Whereas January 2021 will mark the 19th anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the needs of members as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas mentoring programs like Girls Dig Deeper Initiative in Macon, Georgia, makes our communities and our states stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue virtually to ensure that physical distances does not mean social disconnections. Whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in the career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of young persons and their relationships with other adults. And whereas students who meet regularly with members with mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have mentors are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs, and 27% less likely to start drinking. And almost half of today's youth adults report having a mentor in their youth, and those rates appear to have been rising steadily over the past several decades. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of the year to celebrate, evaluate, and encourage mentoring across the state and recruit caring adult mentors in Bibb County. Now therefore, I, Lester M. Mayor, Lester M. Miller, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentoring Month in Macon and Bibb County, and I urge all citizens to recognize the importance of strengthening our communities through mentoring and to observe this month with gratitude for active mentors and the opportunities to develop new mentors. In witness whereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this 31st day of January 2021, and it is signed by Lester M. Miller.
Please have her come forward. On behalf of Mayor Miller. Dr. Ficklin, if you'll come forward whether to take a picture, we would appreciate it. Our next proclamation will be in recognition of the Mentor Project. And along those same lines, we have June O'Neil come forward, and Commissioner Valerie Nguyen will read that proclamation.
June, stay six feet from me while I read this, okay? Please, ma'am. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Macon, Bibb County, Georgia. Whereas the Education Committee of the Greater Macon Chamber of Commerce initiated the Mentors Project in 1990, and it is now a separate nonprofit agency governed by a board of directors. The pilot program began at Southeast High School. Encouraging stories about mentor protege pairs at Southeast prompted the further expansion of the program to Central, Southwest, Westside, and Northeast High Schools respectively. In 1996, two middle schools, Miller and Appling, joined the program, followed by Weaver in 1999. The Hutchings Career Center joined the program in 2002. Rutland Middle School and Rutland High School joined the program in 2003. Howard Middle School joined the program in 2004. Over the past few years, the program has grown from a handful of mentors in one school to more than 314 schools. Whereas 2020 marked the 30th anniversary for the Mentors Project, and 15 of the 31 Mentors Project high school 2010 graduates are currently attending college. Whereas the need for this program in our community is great. 36% of freshmen in the Bibb County Public Schools do not graduate with their class due to dropping out or falling behind. Whereas the Mentors Project has been successful in steering students away from drugs, crime, and dropping out of school. In addition, students mention that members mentors have helped them to control their temper, get along better with their families, members, and teachers, and improve their social skills, grooming habits, and general overall outlook on the future. Hopelessness has now, excuse me, hopelessness, low self-esteem, and despair are replaced with hopefulness and a desire for a better future. Nearly 100% of the proteges who graduate from high school with an active mentor will attend a post-secondary institution and become a productive member of the community. Whereas during the recent pandemic, the Mentors Project has fed more than 750 children and their families on an ongoing basis. Now therefore, I, Lester M. Miller, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Mentoring Month in Macon, Bibb County, and I urge all citizens to recognize the importance of strengthening our communities through mentoring and to observe this month with gratitude for active members and the opportunities to develop new mentors. I, whereas thereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this 2nd day of February 2021, Lester M. Miller, Mayor. Let me put this on real quick so I can give this to you. And thank you, June O'Neil, for, if you don't know June O'Neil, she's responsible for all of this to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all please come forward for pictures as well. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for all you do, the Mentor Projects and all mentors. We couldn't do this without you, and we're all in this together, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you've done, especially during the COVID pandemic, and all the work that you continue to do. At this time, we'll move on to item B, which is the National School Counseling Week. That will be presented, a proclamation by Commissioner Elaine Lucas. Ms. Hernandez, if you'll come forward as well.
Good evening. It is an honor for me to have been asked to read and present this proclamation in honor of National School Counselors Week. I recall during my days in the Bibb school system, first as an elementary teacher at Springdale, and then went to Hunt Magnet, and that's when Bibb County put in place the first four elementary counselors, and I happened to be one of those. And I had two schools, and it was unique. It was a unique experience. But now, I just want to say to parents that every school now has counselors in it, and that is just great. And because we're in a pandemic does not mean that the counselors are not on duty and not working on behalf of your children. So at this time, I would like to read and present this proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and it reads, "Whereas, school counselors are employed in middle and private schools, in public and private schools, to help students reach their full potential. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, our mayor, the Honorable Lester M. Miller, does hereby proclaim February 1st through the 5th, 2021, as National School Counseling Week in Macon, Bibb County, and he urges all citizens to commend and appreciate the hard work and dedication of school guidance counselors and the impact they make on the lives of students, parents, and our society. In witness whereof, he has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of Macon, Bibb's Consolidated Government to be affixed. And it's my honor at this time, as a retired school counselor, a very, very proud educator, retired educator, to present this proclamation on behalf of a very grateful Macon, Bibb government."
You can at least tell them who you are and what's your...
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Lester Miller, as we recognize National School Counseling Week, I'd like to thank you and your team for your support. This year's theme is School Counselors: All In for All Students. School counselors are, play a vital role in supporting K-12 education. School counselors provide social, emotional, academic, and career support to students and families. We work closely together with other support staff members, including school social workers and school psychologists, to address the needs of the whole child. School counselors also play an important role in helping ensure that all students are prepared for learning and life. We continue to work and make sure that students, through leadership, advocacy, and collaboration, that all students know that their voices are being held, heard, and it is evident throughout our district that Bibb school counselors are all in for all students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, and Commissioner Elaine Lucas. I think some of that she read without looking at, I'm very impressed. And I would like to say a special appreciation to Ms. Hernandez. Our paths have crossed before, she's been an excellent, excellent provider and helpful for both of my boys, as well as my niece and nephew at Westside, not only the counseling part, but also getting into college. A lot of times today, our parents may not be equipped to do all that paperwork and know what tests to do, and you've certainly been an asset, and I think we put a lot on you at the school system, probably sometimes more than you can bear, but we certainly appreciate the good work that you do and continue to do for our system. So thank you personally, okay? At this time, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. We have the minutes from January 19th, 2021 regular commission meeting. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for approval, please. A motion by Commissioner Wilder, a second by Commissioner Nguyen. Any discussion in regards to that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. This time, we're also, I'm made aware that we have no public comments on the agenda items tonight, so we do not have any comments that's been sent in or requests to speak to the commission tonight, which is good. We do have numerous items on the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion in just a moment for those items, followed by the old business item that we added to the agenda, new business item, and we will have a need to go into executive session tonight. So at this time, we'll move on to consent agenda. That consent agenda are items A through GG. I will say that I've asked the communications to place a direct link to the website that has each and every one of these attached to that on a regular basis, as well as the link to the video, since we've been airing the committee meetings out of full transparency. All these items were previously passed, or do pass, from the commission meeting, committee meeting as a whole, and sent to the consent agenda. So this time, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published on items A through GG. I get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Nguyen. I get a second. Second by Commissioner Howell. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lucas.
The only thing, Ms. Mayor, is we do have some of the folks who have been nominated for these different boards, so if you and the colleagues don't object, if, when those folks are here, if we could please recognize them. I kind of like the idea of calling out their name or at least reading that item so that, you know, people will know who they are.
So duly noted, at the next meeting, I'll read the items for people who have been nominated for board and been approved, and whether they're here or not, I'll at least read that part. Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. It's a fair request. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, if it's already passed, consent agenda or not? No? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. We'll move on to item eight, which is old business item. At this time, I'd ask Attorney McNeil to come forward to the podium. Board members, you remember the previous discussion we had on regards to this topic. This is a denial of new alcohol beverage license for SR groceries located at 3173 Houston Avenue, Macon, Georgia. That is my motion. Can I get a second? Got a second by Pro Tem Clark. At this time, we will entertain any discussion or questions for Attorney McNeil. Attorney McNeil, if you want to just speak briefly about what this is to remind all the commissioners prior to our vote, or any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was brought before Committee of the Whole, I believe, at the January 12th meeting, and this was the item, the store where Commissioner Watkins had some questions about the presence of other vice marts in the area. And so we did identify a location, Shiv Food Mart, that is, it was about 2,200 feet away, and the limit is 2,500 feet. And so because of that, we sent a letter to the owner on January 19th, you know, informing them of the commission's recommendation to deny. And the owner actually called and spoke with Attorney Howard in my office, and he explained to her the fact that they were too close to another vice mart, and therefore that was the basis of the denial recommendation. And my understanding from the talking to Attorney Howard is that the conversation after that, she basically just said, oh, okay, thanks for letting me know. And so the deadline for her to ask for a hearing to appeal the decision was yesterday. That time is run, she has not requested a hearing. And so, under our ordinances, she is deemed as a matter of law to have consented to the disposition recommended without further hearing or due process. And so I'm back before the board, or before the commission now to, you know, ask y'all to take a final vote on the disposition of this license matter.
Thank you, Attorney McNeil. Board members, commission members, any questions? Pro Tem Clark, you have a question?
I just personally want to thank the members from the previous commission, Commissioner Watkins, Commissioner Tillman, Commissioner Lucas, Commissioner Nguyen, Commissioner Jones, for approving and working on this vice mart legislation. It's given us the tools to do what we need to do tonight, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. We do have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries, and that order is carried out. We're going to move on to new business number, which is number nine. I'll read those items briefly. That would be referred to the Committee of the Whole for next meeting, and then after that, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Please remember that there may be some additional items added on before next Tuesday, and some of these items may be for informational purposes only. That first item will be an ordinance for Chapter 28 Code to establish an automatic traffic enforcement safety device program. This is something we spoke to you about previously as an information item. You'll be, will be receiving some information in regards to that by, those documents by email, and we'll discuss those and have someone available to answer the questions for those on your Tuesday. We also have B, which is a resolution appointing Lisa Watson. Ms. Watson's information is in and been reviewed. That is a motion by Commissioner Elaine Lucas to add her to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Board, and we'll take care of that on Tuesday as well. We have C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to apply for a 2021 L-MIG grant. And this is information that we asked each of the commissioners on the last time to please reach out to Dr. Moffett if you want to discuss any of the streets that were listed there, or add or subtract any streets, and I take that most of you have done that. Item D is an ordinance to authorize appropriation of $5,656, $359 from 2018 Spots. This is proceeds from Walker Road Landfield, a closure line item. Item E is a resolution authorizing the mayor for a professional services agreement with WMA Planning and Designing. That is architects an amount of $25,000 for the completion of design services for the parking lot for the judicial. We'll discuss that and answer any questions on the second, I'm sorry, the ninth. Item F is an ordinance authorizing a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance to the coroner's office for contractual services. That line item is an amount of $100,000. We'll discuss that motion as well next week. We have a resolution number G. I'm sorry, Mr. Tillman, do you have a question?
I was going to go back to the L-MIG. I wanted to ask Commissioner Jones, because I failed to follow up, make sure that the street that we discussed, Pearson Ridge, that Dr. Moffett has that on our list, because I've been, you know, I failed to do that.
He does, and that's in District Nine, as we discussed, and so that's from Ingleside, from Pierce to Ridge.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman, Commissioner Jones. Move on to the resolution for G, which is Resolution to Officially Name the Structure Located at 700 Poplar Street as a Macon-Bibb City Hall. They say, "Resolution sponsored by Commissioner Al Tillman." Looking forward to hear more about that next Tuesday. Item H is a resolution submitting Teresa Robinson, Milton Appling, and Bill Tiff as a slate of nominees to succeed Chantel King Whitby on the Macon-Bibb County Hospital Authority. We will hear that next week. Item I is a resolution submitting David Danzy, Andy Galloway, and Ellis Evans as a slate of nominees to succeed David Danzy on the Macon-Bibb County Hospital Authority. Item J is a resolution to approve 29th Amendment to the 2018 Spots Project Timeline as a budget presented to Spots Project manager, I'm sorry, manager. Those items involve a lot of the items we added recently in the last week with the master service agreement and the convenience centers and the landfill we discussed. Item K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a professional services agreement with Opto Traffic LLC for the provision of automated school zone speed cameras. That was the information item before. We have a contract now that we want you to consider. Any questions in regards to new business items at this time? Commissioner Watkins?
Either as an action item or a discussion item, I need a item added concerning the Book of T. Washington. I know me and you have been talking back and forth. I understand that the construction is completed, and I know that there's several options on the table for, I guess, overall management, so that I would like that added.
Okay. I ask them to add it as an information item so we can discuss it, and hopefully it can provide an update at that time as well. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any other questions in regard to new business? No questions, we'll now move on to executive session. We have listed all the reasons we can go into executive session, and those have been approved by our attorney. At this time, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the reasons published. Can I get a second? Got a second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries. We're now in executive session, and we will retire to the mayor's conference room, please. Hey, we're back live now, and I want to get a motion to come out of executive session. Got a motion by Commissioner Tillman, second by Commissioner Wilder. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. We're now at executive session, and we have eight of our commissioners here. This time, I think that's all the items we have on the agenda tonight, but I do want to remind, we have no public comments on non-agenda items tonight. But I do want to remind, we have no public comments on non-agenda items. Do want to remind commissioners that next Tuesday, the ninth, not only is it Commissioner Tillman's birthday, it is also going to be a time when we do a tour of two of our, actually one of our facilities, which is a combined police and fire facility on Tinker Drive. And we've had made arrangements for the fire department to have a couple of vans so we can social distance to take us there. And then we'll leave there and go to the one and one Robbins. For those of you that are interested in going, it's part of our meeting. The media has been invited to go since it's part of an open meeting. And we may talk about the actual facilities while we're there. So I hope you can attend. If you can't attend with the group and want to drive your own car, you're certainly able to do that. Commissioner Tillman?
Personal privilege when you are done at that point, sir.
Yes, sir. We're at that point. Go ahead.
Just want to remind folks that we have to continue to take COVID very, very serious. The mayor, Bellevue, Merritt Johnson's son, recently passed away. And I'm not necessarily saying that it was from COVID, and it was not. But I'm just saying that so much is happening. Pastor Cavanis is suffering in the hospital. Pastor Bryant Rains, so many family members. I recently had an aunt that's passed from this. My uncle's in the hospital from this. So many folks on social media. And I haven't been on there as much, maybe to just share some information and then move on. But these are very terrible times. A lot of folks prayed and said that they wanted to end two thousand and twenty, but they didn't pray for all the bad stuff to stay in two thousand and twenty. So we need some new prayer warriors out there to pray for what's going on. And I want y'all to continue to be safe and we all continue to be safe. And we're examples of leading by government, that we are practicing what we preach and what the governor has put out. The mayor and his administration is leading the way. The sheriff department is doing things out there in the community that if folks are not going to obey or abide, this administration is going to be taking action, the sheriff department is going to be taking action. And I think this commission is going to stand by them because we have to get past this pandemic. It's not fair for some folks to be out doing things outside of the COVID and the governor and the mayor's resolutions and ordinances and others are not. So it's very serious. And I think by now, we all either know a family member, a friend, or somebody that suffered from COVID-nineteen or an illness. So y'all continue to be vigilant and continue to be safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman, for those comments. I would like to say that I'm going to ask Attorney McNeil to send an email to each and every one of the commissioners, providing them a link to the new executive order we received. Governor Kemp has extended the executive order in regards to COVID through March the seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. And we're asking him to send a copy of that. If you have any questions of that, please reach out to him directly to discuss that. Any other point of personal privileges? Have a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Wilder, a second by Commissioner Pro Tem Clark. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. We now adjourn.